All right, I'd like to thank everyone for coming to the City Council meeting this evening. And we'll go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and if you'll remain standing, our invocation this evening will be brought by Councilman Thompson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That is what we pray. Father, we come before your throne of grace again boldly but humbly, and we just want to thank you for watching over us and blessing us, and we pray that you just be with this council tonight. We pray that you'll be with this meeting. Father, your word says that "For the Lord gives wisdom, and from his mouth comes knowledge and understanding." Father, we ask for wisdom, and we ask that you speak to us, wisdom and understanding, as we conduct business. Father, we pray for the people of this city; we pray for the people who work in the city, from the staff to the first responders. Father, be with each one. Father, we thank you for this country that we live in. May we never take our freedoms for granted. In Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
No, you're okay. I'm super protected from my knee. Making sure I wouldn't get hit on the chair.
Moving right along to our agenda this evening. Our first item is citizens' concerns about items not on tonight's agenda. This is an opportunity for those of you here to address the City Council in the open meeting about items that are not on tonight's agenda. If anyone would like to stand and address the City Council, you're more than welcome to. With that opportunity, there you go.
Yay!
Yeah, please stand and state your name and address.
Carsten Mortensen, Lake Forest, and well, my neighbors are on the council here, and I know a couple of others of you. I would like to know, well, actually, I have something to hand out, but I'd like to know if this council has dealt with the issue of advanced wireless telecommunications within the city limits yet, and specifically 5G, which is short for fifth generation. Has there been any contact with 5G providers, or have any agreements reached?
Not that I'm aware of, nope.
Okay. And let me proceed. I'll hand these out.
Nothing specific to 5G.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of that would be based off of, we have leased our commitment as, it was agreed, agreed with franchise, our agreement.
Thank you, Preston. Well, I would like to raise the alarm about 5G. 5G is a lethal technology, and it's coming fast all over the country, and so I think we have to protect ourselves. 5G uses very short wavelengths of electromagnetic radiation, or also called milliwaves, because they are from submillimeter to a couple of millimeters, at very high frequencies between 30 and 300 gigahertz. And they deliver enormous amounts of power, but it's over very short distances. To compensate for the short range, they have to put in small cells, which are mini cell towers, also called portable base stations. They have to be placed on utility poles along public right-of-ways, perhaps every 20 to 100 feet. These small cells will beam this power in all directions, and then the devices will be able to assemble all this power through multiple antennas and deliver great capacity. But the proponents of this only emphasize the benefits, which are things like the Internet of Things that you have heard about, perhaps smart devices, your refrigerator talking to you and things like that. They're pushing legislation at the federal level and within the states. Kansas has already passed one to take away local control from this issue. Reasonable people are looking at the cost to society, and briefly, there are three that I'm concerned about. One is safety, the impact on our health and the environment. 5G would greatly extend the FCC's current policy of mandatory irradiation of the public without adequate prior study of the potential health impact and assurance of safety. The telecom industry itself has done no safety studies, and they don't intend to do any. But independent evidence indicates that 5G poses a major threat to all life forms. Studies have linked EMF and RF, that's electromagnetic field, and radio frequency radiation to cancer, depression, sensory disorders, nervous system disorders, cardiovascular disease, memory loss, and much more. Second issue is legality, the preemption of local zoning rights. The FCC is usurping local rights by doing this. 5G may be the greatest defense to local control of all time. And the third is privacy. These small cell installations will be able to house additional devices without our knowledge, including video cameras, listening devices, microwave devices that can image the interior of homes, and other things we probably haven't even thought about. And one of these, I think it's the second page down, shows you what these little cell stations look like. They're ugly, they consume a lot of power, and they are dangerous. And they are going to be everywhere. And so what the vendors, the providers are going to do is come in and fully the cities to let them put these wherever they want, on the poles that are already there, or at your extent, at our expense, put in new poles for them. We'll get to pay for it. Recently, the city of Brussels, Belgium, became the first major city to halt 5G deployment due to health effects. And incidentally, Brussels is the headquarters of the EU. Could it be that the Eurocrats don't want to be irradiated? One doctor said, I cannot, I'm sorry, this is still on Brussels, the Minister of Government that is in charge of quality of life in Brussels said, "I cannot welcome such a technology if the radiation standards, which must protect the citizen, are not respected 5G or not. The people of Brussels are not guinea pigs whose health I can sell at a profit. We cannot leave anything to doubt." And I have included several pages of information. All you have to do is go online and say dangers of 5G, and you'll have enough work for a couple of years. But I say it's time to stand up to the bullies pushing 5G.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mortensen. I do, you referenced the state, Kansas came out two years ago, I believe, and restricted a lot of the ability of us to even control at all a lot of the deployment of this technology, as I understand it. But I'm very, I don't know a lot about this type of technology, so it's something good to have that information. Thank you very much. Moving along, anyone else that has any issues to come before the City Council this evening that are not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, I'll move forward with the regular meeting, or I'm sorry, the consent agenda. The consent agenda this evening includes minutes from the March 25 City Council meeting, claims for city operation, and claims for public housing authority, appointments to boards and commissions on the Cemetery Advisory Committee, appointment of Robin Harris to a three-year term. Anything to be pulled by the city staff? By citizens? Questions or clarifications from the council? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion.
Wow, that was awesome. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as written.
So moved and seconded. No other questions, concerns, comments? Vote, please.
Shannon?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Garland?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Yep?
Yes.
Going to pass it.
Onto our regular meeting agenda, the first item of which is the Government Services Center Project Award Bid. Bid/Award. Staff?
This is a project with the city of Portland for a number of years. Actually, I found the first reference to at least the city hall was in about 1973 in the common plan of the city that said that current city hall is no longer functional for its use.
Oops.
On February 11th of 2019, the City Council unanimously approved a resolution authorizing issuance of general obligation bonds to finance this project. So accordingly, the city did have this project publicly let, so it was advertised. Bids were open on March 29. Those bids are included within the memo. The apparent little bidder was KBS. That has been validated, as well as reference checks done by SFS. Dana Gold is here if you have any questions related to that process. Beyond just the base bid, there were three alternatives, which again are laid out also in the memo. At this time, none of those alternatives are being recommended, so it's only a base bid that is being recommended, and that is being recommended to be awarded to KBS. Any other questions?
Thank you. Anything else to add by the citizens or either of you? Nothing right now? Very good. I'm sure there'll be questions. Thank you very much. Seeing nothing else, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve awarding the Centennial City Hall and Police Headquarters project to KBS for the amount not to exceed $14,104,998.
Second.
Moved and seconded, we'll start down here with Councilman Shannon. Anything? Questions, concerns, comments?
No. I was curious on the cladding. It was, I think, option three, Sean. Do you, I didn't really understand what they were saying. Were we able to have limestone as an option of cladding as opposed to metal? And we didn't do that, or what was it saying?
Dana, would you like to?
That was for the coping stones at the historic city hall. They go back to stone in lieu of a metal coping. It's not the overall cladding of the building. It was just for the coping stones. And we would recommend that they go, go back to stone. It would be better in terms of longevity.
Of course.
For the building. But being that the project was over the original budget, we didn't feel prudent to recommend an add, but I do think that should be something that's considered.
I was going to ask, how do we go about doing that? I mean, it's like, you guys' bid was what, 14,4? Do you know what it was?
14,104.
14,104.
14,104. Is there any option that we have an input to add on that? I mean, has that?
That's absolutely your guys' discretion if you would like to add any of the alternatives that are listed.
Because on the-
And I should also note, too, that we had already had a couple of discussions with KBS to look at other ways of reducing. We felt like it was part of the due diligence of working with, and they've been great to work with, to try to come up with ideas that help reduce that 14,1, but yet keeps the quality of the project, so we're continuing to have those conversations.
Well, I mean, things like that, like the stone feature on a 100-year-old facility already, we should look into that, or at least approve it. Wasn't it only an additional 100,000 on the 14,1 of the whole project?
Yeah, it wasn't. I believe so. It was on the 200.
99,170.
Yeah. Do you know the lifespan of the metal coping versus the limestone? Do you happen to have any projection on that?
I couldn't give you, like, we always look at for a building like city hall, public building, we always strive for a 40-to-50 year plan.
Yeah, 40-to-50 year plans.
For long-term owners.
Of course.
And I feel like that's the properly installed stone cladding.
Correct.
Flashed and, like, our detail would give you that, should give you that for 40-to-50 year.
Yeah. Okay. The reason I was asking the question is, is there any way to clarify that we have that option before we vote on it and nix it out?
It's, I think it's a matter of amending the motion and including that.
I amend the motion so that we can at least have a discussion on that?
Please continue.
Or go with it.
Yeah. To amend it, it will require a motion and a second, and then we'll discuss that. If you want to continue with this discussion, we'll continue with this discussion, and you can make that motion to amend after this discussion.
I'm making the motion to amend the amount, or what am I amending?
You're going to make an emotion to amend the original motion to include the alternate item that you want to do.
I'll look that up. I would, I think, we want to make that motion now, or like you said, have a discussion first, and then-
Yeah, let's discuss the current motion on the floor, and prior to that, there'll be an opportunity to make a motion to amend.
One other question with it, are we on the bonds? I never heard any more about how they were financed or the payment of them. Is that part of this, or I don't know if I'm asking the right people? Sorry, Sean, I was-
Yeah, that's fine. What needs to happen, there needs to be a withdrawal of the original motion in a second, and then at that point, you can make a new motion. And I would say that if you want to include alternative one, option seven, so award the bid to KBS.
Can't withdraw a motion once it's listed in. And to include the bond.
Couldn't you have a secondary motion after this motion?
No.
Yeah, maybe you could add it on.
Because this motion has already been made and seconded, it'd have to pass or fail. But to vote for it, you can't really withdraw a motion. So I was looking at this as a friendly admission, friendly amendment, but that's actually just another motion that you deal with. So we'll go ahead and continue with this discussion.
Okay. Second part of what I had on the bond bids on the payment schedule, we had the workshop that we were talking about, the two different plans and the structuring of that, but I didn't ever hear any more about how those were going about.
So the council, who was that, silly?
Last meeting.
Last meeting, yeah.
Last meeting. Let's buy some quickly. The City Council did approve going out for bid. That was, we're actually having a conversation next week in preparation for the bond rating, but the issuance is up to a little less than $10 million. I can't remember the exact number off the top of my head, but it includes two modes of financing. One is using existing debt that will be refinanced.
Correct. I read that in there.
So that saves a certain amount of money just in doing that, and then an additional amount that would just be paid by head over heels taxes. So again, that's in motion. I think that's out for bid.
I think it's, I think it's mid-May is the sale, and then we get the proceeds June, 1st of June.
And before that sale, do we have to choose a payment method to go along with the bond, or is that done after the bond, and then we tell them how we're going to pay it back?
I think the council decided on, we discussed that, I think, earlier this year on the 25-year bond. We discussed that financing earlier with the council this year.
Yeah. It was, yeah, there was a pact that-
The wraparound, or whatever they call it.
Yeah, and that's, I remember the whole workshop. I just didn't know, did we choose an option on that?
I think by consensus, we approved that.
And then a portion of the debt, I think it's about 6 million will be with this bond.
Mm-hmm.
And then we get into the project after the 1st of the year, the balance of the project will be paid with the second bond after the 1st of the year.
Okay.
And the two, when we discussed it, it was discussed, the two bonds together, the financing.
Yeah, as one unit.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. That answers my question. I'll wait for my amendment redoing.
Anything concerning this man?
Were the alternatives just passed on because they increased the expense, or were they just not important enough to pursue?
I would tell, I mean, the idea was that those were things that we originally had gone out for bid that we recognized weren't necessarily completely needed, is the best way to put that, but so they were included as alternatives so that we could at least identify what the cost was and make that decision to include or not to include.
Are they things that if we find savings along the way, we can go back and add them in?
Yeah, I mean, you could do that as part of a change order that would likely, I can't say for certain whether or not the cost would change even much, just because these are probably a bit more competitive. But that's, yeah, that's certainly something that could be looked at as a project to issue a change order. But these, I think these three things that are listed aren't necessarily items that we would want to issue change orders on, to be fair. I think it's that if the council would like to include those, and again, just for everybody's benefit, alternative one was that coping stone. Alternative two was, this, the building actually has received historic access, it's in the past, the city has went and installed new windows, so that was something just to have consistency, I think would be the best way to put it, that have the same windows. And then the electrified glass, right now, as you go and overlook into what will be the council space and this report space, there is a window tied to it. Right now, it's calling, it's blind. Is that right?
It's a mechanized shade.
It goes to veil. We just put those in our building.
So this would be, this would be just an electrified-
They just click a button, it goes white.
They did some of that, too. They're both neat.
Also, the alternate three, what's in the base bid is the mechanized shades that you have a button, and they would go up and down. The add for alternate three is for a product called switch glass, and the glass actually goes opaque.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's kind of something to think about in terms of maintenance over time, maintaining mechanized shade versus just the glass.
Do we know what the lifespan on that product is? It's relatively new, to my understanding.
Yeah, it is new, so I don't know if you have-
We've done a little bit of it, but not a lot.
Yeah, we just put it in our RV model, and it, we broke three panels installing the boardroom.
And this thing goes for the windows. The windows, we wanted to take into account that, I think, 10, 15 years ago, those windows were, had been replaced, you know? But that thought with this is that you get all of your windows up on the same maintenance cycle, so they're all done. They have a consistent appearance and a consistent maintenance cycle.
170,000 dollars.
Do you know if those would be, I'm sorry, I know I'm talking out of line, the, with the windows, do you know the R factor and all of that, what you guys used? You guys do the argon double glass? Would you happen to know?
I know that they're insulated glass. I don't know, tough as my head, the R value. But they are aluminum, they are aluminum. The new windows are aluminum wood clad on the interior, but aluminum with a powder coat finish on the exterior, so you don't have to think about painting wood.
Correct.
Have we been given any guidance from Mark Nelson, approximately our percentage chance of tax credits? I mean, I know we've gotten them before, but we're talking upwards of $3 million here.
So it's, it's, I think I had, the tax credits are only on city hall itself. You don't get tax credits on the addition or the police facility or the site. And I think I've estimated them to be a little over 1.2 million.
Okay.
So that's 25% of the eligible cost. So even in city hall, there are things like, there is a list of non-eligible things. So that's what Mark Nelson will help you go through that list. And then you have to estimate the fair market value of those tax credits, because you'll have to sell those. Currently, they're about 90 cents on the dollar, so you would take that 25% of the eligible cost times 90%. But it has been, the part two has been approved by the state, so our certification of it.
The already has been approved, okay.
Yes, we submitted that back in, like, November or December. We usually like to do that before you complete the project, in case they find any big issues so we have time to incorporate that into the bid at odds.
And the metal parapet coping instead of the stone passed?
It did, and the reason why is because there's metal now.
Yeah.
If the stone coping was there, and we suggested they go back with metal, they wouldn't have approved it. It's because what you see there, it's already been, well, I don't know if it's been replaced or not, the old stone coping could be under, underneath the metal. We just don't know until we start to demo it.
And that doesn't make an effect on their approval of the restoration of it, or the historic-
We prefer that it go back to stone.
Yeah, that it be historic to the facility.
We have historical documents, and they indicate a stone, also that time period, a lot of times, that's going to be an advent of architectural cast stone.
Correct.
So that could be, we've seen a lot of that in its core qualities, so that could be why, you know, replace it.
I'm just wondering if in the process, we'll, in order to preserve those 1.25 million dollars of tax credits, we'll have to go ahead with this improvement anyway?
No.
This alternative?
That was identified, the coping was identified as metal.
And approved as metal, whether it was originally stone or not.
If we do go back to stone, we would want to submit an amendment, just to let them know of any types of changes like that.
But it would work in our favor potentially.
Absolutely.
Be additional saving, tax credit savings, or additional?
Right, and that would go towards that 199,170, that would be applicable with tax credits.
I wouldn't think so. Sorry, go ahead.
Thanks for the information on the alternate items. I think, like a lot of myself, myself, like a lot of the other council members, we're curious what those entail. Assuming we get approved and we move forward tonight, do we have a timeline of when we're going to be getting, actually deploying, deployment out here and starting on the project?
Typically, it depends a little bit on getting the contract signed and executed and all that. That typically is a four to five week process. That's probably better for you. And once that happens, give us a couple of weeks to get localized, and we'll be ready to go. So four to six weeks is probably fair. Yeah, I would tell you, our process, once you guys have awarded the project, it's pretty quick to start. So it would be, it would be almost four weeks for us to get it put out on.
And then what kind of timeframe are we looking at as far as, number of months?
I think it was 74 weeks. We had 17 months included there for the whole thing, and then that includes the whole building and the regrading down here. So there's probably a little timeframe in there towards into that, that your movement were sorted here, but not totally here, then we come back and get rid of this building for the last half or so.
So 15 months.
And then the, will the two buildings be finishing up about the same time, or will the police headquarters be ahead of?
I think that's one thing that we left with the contractor, was to sort of take the time.
Not that the people here don't want to get out of here, but I know we have it. We're all-
Yeah. When we looked at that, the police station will be done by, I think it was a month and a half or so ahead of city hall. We can work through that, and we don't have to have everything done. Definitely workable there. If we have it done, I guess, month or so.
Thank you. Goodbye. Back to alternate number one, you said, like, the limestone coping, that 40- or 50-year lifespan, what's the lifespan of metal? Could we put in the mission?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know about that.
It wouldn't be near as long. I don't have a definite timeframe anymore, but as long as it's 30 years.
As I say-
I'm guessing somewhere in that.
And so the docs I've read before, it's about 20 to 30 year lifespan on those.
Yeah, the other thing is it would probably take a little bit of maintenance along.
Yeah.
You're like, you're going to have more sealants that would require- You're like, you're going to have more ceiling than with the stone.
I understand that, yeah.
Yeah, as I say, 10 to 15 years of ceiling, just for redoing all the ceiling around and metal coping.
And then with the, with the flashing, with the limestone coping, then you're not going to have to bother with that for 40 years?
If it's installed correctly, I mean, there'll still be some maintenance to that, but are detailed, have a flashing, have a roof pad.
Very good. Other questions or concerns? We have the original motion on the table that's been moved in second. Did you have something?
If the original question moved, as a person who's second agree with the motions, then we just need to amend the motion. We don't have to vote and amend it.
Okay.
Additional question on the windows. Would we be able to amend this to allow us to look into that? Like if we got you guys, the window specs or whatever, the 168 you guys have on here, could we see the window specs so that we have that as a potential option to review that?
Sure.
And one additional, or another additional question I had on there was, did you, have you guys done bids through local contractors? I mean, as an example, Kincaid Concrete. Has there been any push towards attempting to use local entities? Or like McCray-Lumber as an example?
I'm sure we'll use McCray for some of the stuff. Yeah, we have our bid invitation software, so we've got a huge database of all subs in the area. And we send out to anybody, everybody we can, and we really try to use local.
Okay. Just wanted to reference before we get asked about it.
Sure. So who made the original motion?
Before we do that, I couldn't mind following up with what Mr. Mackey was asking in regards to the windows. Does it offer, going with these change of windows, does it really offer anything other than putting them on the same maintenance cycle? I mean, is there any aesthetic value? Is there a better quality? I mean.
I think it's better quality. I don't know exactly the, I think it's better aesthetic quality because they'll all look the same. And I think that the ones that are in there now, and they're in the, what, the bottom two levels, are not wood on the interior. So they're also aluminum on the interior, whereas the rest of them are wood to match the character of the rest of the woodwork inside. So on the interior, there's going to be more of an aesthetic, you'll notice more aesthetically if you keep the older ones.
Then I couldn't mind following up with staff. What do you see as being, is it worth the 168 to do those windows?
I mean, I think again, as is kind of pointed out, it's a maintenance issue type thing. So one thing that we want to do, and this is just citywide, is have a better handle on the maintenance requirements of each one of our facilities. So again, from an administrative sort of standpoint like that, it's better to have all those things replaced, wouldn't be at one time, understanding the age. Again, inevitably, just because of the difference, these are 10-year-old windows, typically replacing windows every 20 years type of timeframe. So, you know, they've got half a life at this point. Beyond that aesthetic.
One additional thing I'd mentioned is with the coating and thing on the windows is stuff to factor in is the inside of the facilities, at least the majority of the windows there haven't been coated, and they wouldn't reflect any of the lighting. I'm losing my words right now and all the phrases and stuff. The simplest aspect of it is painting of rooms, bleaching of carpet, bleaching of facilities of chairs or anything that has large windows, any of the internal things where they would have a lot of light. Your blinds would break down quicker if they didn't have the coating on opposite sides of windows. You'd have blinds replacement, carpet replacement, painting, and just general bleaching if the windows weren't changed out, as opposed to the windows that are up to standard, that are typically coated on the outside and the inside. And it changes the R factor and heat quality of like the internal room. On most commercial buildings, you would upgrade the windows because of that factor alone. It changes with the, it changes things like with the HVAC and the airflow of how the room goes. Just as an additional.
Appreciate that. And I appreciate the staff keeping such a close eye on the overall cost and that, is that the primary reason you excluded these alternatives as overall cost, trying to? Thank you, I appreciate that. Because there's, as the city, as the administration has even said, there's a lot of value in these alternatives, but also paying attention to our economic concerns as well. So I appreciate that. So who made the?
If I may before, so that I can get this straight, because I was the one that made the motion.
Okay, that's.
The original on this was 14,104,998.
Correct.
I believe, Sean, that you mentioned the, was it the alternate one, was approximately $99,170. Is that?
Correct.
Okay, so that would bring it to 14,204,168. Now, the question I have, so that I can understand this, because there's been a lot of stuff said.
Yeah.
That going with the coping stone and stuff would possibly put us in a situation where we would see more of a, or could see more of a benefit from.
Historic tax credit?
Yeah, tax credit, thank you. Also, the, there's a greater life expectancy. Okay, that's, those are the two things that I wanted to make sure of, so, okay, now.
Concerning these alternatives, and you made mention that KBS, you've discussed with them, the possibility of keeping things as lean as possible to help hopefully have some savings that we could attribute to this and future changes. I don't like to say change orders, but changes certainly can go both ways, although it seems like most of the time they go in one direction. And I'm sure we'll have those experiences too in certain areas and not in other areas. But you think that's realistic, that we'll be able to reevaluate these issues on the fly during the construction of the, and whether that comes up to $168,000, it could be a net increase of only $100,000 by the time we get to that?
And there is in the overall budget, there is owner contingency of 10% that we don't recommend a whole two. Especially for the City Hall building being a historic building and the condition that it was in when we did our walkthrough, we even, they did their walkthrough, they're going to be in the same condition we just happened to.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I would rather just, you know, wait and make those changes with a more formal presentation, you know, approve it on this level. But when those, I mean, we're making a lot of general statements about windows, which I don't know anything about.
Just to keep it in mind, I'm going to have to play a comment too, but the overall budget, which you also have $60 million for this, so that is, there's going to be an additional amendment to this, as contract, it still needs to come to review all, to approve their contract administration, as well as what they had done through the bidding process. So we were actually on a contract with them during that timeframe proceeded, obviously. So there's going to be that cost still, and then the inclusion of that 10% contingency, and it doesn't sell, that's 1.4 million. So again, that's just something to keep in mind, that we'll have to, if we choose, or if you choose rather to add more to it, it's likely that we might go over that threshold. Just want to make that clear. Tilly, did you have?
I just wasn't sure, Dana maybe, when you were discussing the windows, if there is an issue, since we'd already gotten historic tax credits for those before, if it, if there was any issue with getting them again for the same thing.
I don't think there would be, but I think we should, we should discuss that.
Yeah, could we look into that?
But I don't, I don't think that there would be. I mean, they are already 10, they were put in in 2005.
Cycles aren't.
So by the time, you could almost state the case that they're nearing the end of their usable lifespan.
Okay.
I should clarify, too, that out of the three alternate, alternates, alternates one, which is the stone and the windows, alternate two would be the only ones eligible for the tax credits. I don't believe that switch glass.
Yeah.
Switch glass wouldn't be eligible. I don't believe that would be eligible.
It's not really.
Say that again, which two are eligible?
One and two.
One and two, okay.
Well, I think there's a guarantee, yours is saying you believe they should be eligible. But one is definitely, two.
I always say a 99% chance two is eligible, three is not.
Should we come back to, can we do a discussion on this, rather than making the motions?
Okay.
Look at the windows and stuff?
Well, there's a few things.
The reason I'm asking is this is, as Kip was saying, it's a $250,000 decision at this point.
Right. There is the issue that this, these bids are only 30 days. So that 30 days will expire pretty damn quickly here. So again, that's the contractor language that was in the bid. So there is a timeframe that there needs to be a decision on the overall project.
Well, I think this original bid, base bid, is a great way to start this project. And we have the financing bit and appropriate financial considerations in place to do what's best for the city. Along the way, we may have an opportunity to recognize some economy that we could attribute to these areas. That could also help reduce maintenance and future replacement costs. And it appears through the due diligence that we've had done, KBS is motivated to help us with that. So I think this is a good way to go, and I personally think that would be the best thing to do right now, is not to specifically mandate conclusion of alternatives one, two, or three, but use those along the way as perhaps an option if the funds become.
And the only thing that I was going to maybe mention, and correct me if I'm wrong here, but for that coping, like Dana said, they're not sure what's underneath that. So we may get up there and realize that it's there. So that might be an opportunity to reevaluate at that point.
And recognizing that may be a change order that we're not only had the opportunity to do front end, but also required to do because of whatever, so.
The only other one I was going to mention with windows is that these, the windows that we're talking about are being, so there should be a quantity, or there should be a price for the type of window, I'm assuming.
Correct.
The change order would simply just be that we would increase the number of windows if they're buying an X amount.
Installation and all that.
That would be the other part of that. So again, to your point there, that's, we can evaluate, if that's your guys' direction, we can take that as such and proceed and reevaluate that and also figure out where we come in at with it.
I would say some of these three items, none of them are anything that has to be known right up front, because it's going to be a, it's going to be a timeframe before you actually get to that, where a decision would need to be made, so.
And that's all I just wanted to do, is make sure we still have the coping stone. Well, my initial was make sure we have these open, rather than just locking them out.
Very good. So I think the original motion stands. It was made in second, we had a lot of discussion, and at the present time, there's no, been no amendments, or no friendly amendments or otherwise. So unless there's other discussion or clarification, pass for a vote, please.
Kip?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Curly?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Students?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And not that it matters, but I would vote yes, too, but not that anybody asked.
It matters.
It always matters.
Tell me, Mayor, how do you vote? Thank you very much. I'm excited to have KBS a part of our community and working on a very historic, iconic part of our community with the 1918 building, as well as a new, state-of-the-art, leading professional facility for our police department, sadly needed. Thank you very much. And along the way, we rely on both of your professional expertise in bringing to us these concerns. It would be very nice to be able to say carte blanche yes to everything, but we're just really not at that spot. The windows, install glass, I understand the pluses and minuses to both sides. I think it'd be really great, and I'm considering breaking every window in my house and putting it back in, but that probably won't happen. No, my wife. But I see the pluses to having it, just at $100,000, it may not be the first option we're bound with doing. So thank you very much. Congratulations.
It's written, soon some dirt turned.
Yeah.
Very good.
Do the whole gold-plated shovel thing?
We'll have to do something.
EBB.
Yeah.
Do something, that's a big deal.
Something exciting.
I think we have some gold-plated.
You guys have to find some, Forrest. Gold spray painted shovels, not gold plated. Yeah.
It all looks good in pictures, it doesn't matter.
I'd add that into the, no change orders for shovels, right?
Or shovels and dills we go before we have little sledgehammers and the.
That's fine, yeah.
Get it on the wall, too.
Very good.
Definitely.
Great. Congratulations. This has been, like you said, a long time coming, I'm excited. So thank you very much. Onto a related issue, item number two, consulting and accounting services related to historic tax credits.
Tilly LaPlante, finance director. This item is to authorize the city manager to sign engagement letters with Mark Nelson to aid us in acquiring the historic tax credits for the project. It would be in three separate engagements. The first engagement is estimated to be $3,500, and that's for the planning and identifying the eligible costs. This is kind of a, I think of it as a three-phase project. We've got the police building, the eligible historic credit cost, and the non-eligible. So Mark Nelson has, was recommended by SFS, and they've worked with historic tax credits. So they would help us to identify them and get, get everything that we're eligible for. And then the second phase would be a compilation if we felt we needed that. Until we get into the first phase, we'll see how much direction we need from them. The max would be the three engagements at a not exceed amount of $15,000.
Very good, thank you. Anything to add by citizens? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to authorize the city manager to sign engagement letters with Mark Nelson in an amount not to exceed 15,000 for consulting and accounting services related to historic tax credits for the renovation of the 1918 building.
Second?
Moved in seconded, and we'll start with our questions, concerns, comments.
The question I was, the tax credit that we could possibly get, how much could that be?
90% of 1.2 million?
Yeah, so I think Dana said that was about 1.2, 1.2 million is what, that's a full 20% recoup.
What's an additional here?
Nothing.
Would the window thing we just chatted about be included? You're good.
Yes, I think she said one and two, which is coping.
Was she the bond counsel, or the?
She's SFS.
Okay.
So, and I think they've worked on historic projects, too. But that was my concern, since we've gotten credit on the windows originally, but has been 15 years, so I assume.
And if anybody knows, it's going to be Mark Nelson.
Well, I just wanted to make sure they weren't, we didn't have to come back with a change order for extra money.
We can find that out from the state easily.
Well, I meant on this particular thing, I did want to make sure we're paying for whatever we have to pay for, even if they're doing the research on the windows now, too, and the coping.
Yeah, I don't think that's going to.
Yeah, I don't think they'll affect the cost too much. After that, I don't think.
Anything else? Seeing nothing else, vote, please.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Oh, we're sorry, yeah, I have a finger in my ear.
Curly?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Yeah.
Wood?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yep.
Motion passes.
Very good, on to our next item, number three, IBTS property maintenance inspections.
Karen LaPlanta, Community and Economic Development Director. This is, IBTS currently does our building code permits and inspections. This would be to utilize them for property maintenance inspections as well. It's a, an adoption of the fee schedule that they proposed, which is an attachment to the current service agreement. They would do a systematic approach to go through and do a drive-by inspection of all properties in Bonner to look for environmental code issues, nuisance code issues, any planning or zoning issues, and do a holistic approach to kind of get all of those deficiencies brought up to standard, code standard. So it's their approach to work with the property owner to resolve these deficiencies. We're not hoping to go in and hit people with any citations right off the bat or anything like that. We want to work with people, inform them what the codes are, see if we can get the properties up to standard, preferably without any of that process. But if they had to get to that point, then there's provisions in the agreement and the service fee schedule to allow for that. This year, we have about $10,000 that we could spend out of the community and economic development budget to pay for some of the inspections and the work that they would do with our staff to get these resolved. If it's not complete, if the whole city inspections aren't complete in 2019, we'll give that back to you all for budget consideration with the 2020 budget approval over the summer.
Thank you. Anything else to add, citizens? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adopt IBTS property maintenance fee schedule as attachment J to the service agreement and utilize IBTS for property inspections not to exceed $10,000 in 2019.
Second. Moved in seconded, questions, concerns, comments, and we'll start, I think, down here. Nope, down here this time. Oh, yep, you're ready.
Okay, yeah, I'm ready, no finger in the air, but anyway. Sean, this is great. And I like the idea of it being a third party, which nobody can say that we, or, you know, feel favored, or are not happy with somebody or anything like that, which is not the case. But I think this is, this is really good, and I can see where it would be real helpful. And I like the idea that, Amber, as you said, that our families are the most important thing, and let's, because each family has certain things, and when you work with them, it tends to work better. So that's great.
So that's all.
Is this to, is this replacing our current codes officer?
It is not. It's to, to the third party go through and do an inspection of all the properties. There's no way that our one current staff member would be able to do that. So this is assisting our current staff member, and any zoning issues would come to Rachel, the planning department as well. So it's to assist staff, not replace them.
Okay, I don't understand the fee schedule. I mean, because like essentially saying dangerous houses, I mean, I've talked to Rachel's mother people about probably 10 or 15 of them. So are they instantly going to charge us like 10 grand as they drive down one street?
No, this, this would be to work through everything to get those code problems taken care of. So if they, they see it, they would bring it to our attention, and we would talk through the process on which direction we want to take with them.
And if we were already involved with it, we would say, no, you don't need to do it this. But if we weren't involved with it, and it's something completely new, and both of those departments were swamped, you would say, okay, yes, help us with this, and that would be the cost.
So they're going to evaluate first and then charge us later? Or if we ask them for assistance, they'll charge us later?
I think, yeah, it would be agreed upon.
They're going to end in towards...
Yeah, that's, they'll find problems first and say, hey, do you guys want to look at these? And we'll say, yes, this one, this one, this one, okay.
Well, and let me clarify that. The intent is to go through systematically and just sweep through the entire community. I should clarify this really quickly, is that it's not the intent to go get every little item.
Yeah, every little nuance.
It's something that I think we would want to continue for a number of years. And this is really just to get the finger on the pulse of what the issues are, so that we can either take corrective action through this process with IBTS, or if we find through our educational process that people just are not informed, or they do not know what the codes are, maybe our codes are in conflict, that we, the city, need to make adjustments to that. So I don't think that it's not going to be a conversation of city staff choosing.
Yeah, and I didn't, thank you for clarifying that, I appreciate it.
I just want to be clear on that, it's really intended to just start to get the bad issues taken care of to the extent of either correcting them with the property owner, or if the city needs to, going through that process, which we've talked about in the past, is a laborious process to go through as it involves...
Each piece.
...traditional issues you process on some forms and curves.
Okay, pretty good.
I'm amazed that $10,000 doesn't sound like very much when you, when you identify what they're doing, which is, yeah, it makes sense. They're the first alarm guy.
Kind of that same thing, is $10,000 realistic to get through the majority of the inspections?
Yeah.
I imagine it will be coming back to you.
It's funny, realistic. Does any portion of the fee then passed on to the resident?
We can, in ways, resident...
Fine.
Some of it can be discussed through the court system as not, not like a court fee or anything like that.
Like restitution kind of thing?
Well, they can, they can agree to it through plea agreements and things like that to pay and try to resolve it that way before it gets to the hefty fines.
Thank you.
Nothing. How much interfacing with our current codes officer will there be, will take place? Will they be, will they contact a problem homeowner that has an issue? Or will they involve our current codes enforcement officer to make that contact?
I would think it would depend on each situation. If our codes officer has the information for the property owner and they can handle that situation, then I would say they probably could. If it's something where there's an absentee owner, we're not sure who owns it, we need to do more research, we might bring them in to help with items like that.
But of course, if they come in, will they still keep our codes officer up to date on the progress? So they're at least aware of what's going to happen.
Yeah, on non-compliance, will the owners have to pay more in the future for not, for non-compliance?
Escalate.
If they refuse to comply, the court says they have to pay so much, they don't do anything, any repair work, so is it going to continue to spiral on up for a little bit?
We do have what's the review offender, so we will have that option to, that if you fail, if you fall and disarray a second time within the same twelve-month period, then that's, there is a habitual offender portion of that. That's one thing that IBTS has done, is they have reviewed our ordinances to ensure that whatever they're enforcing is in line with what we, the city, have adopted. So that would be something that as we work through this, again, this is, this is a brand-new thing for us to do. So there's going to be some, oh, flexibility, I guess, there a little bit, just to try to figure out the best way to go about this process.
There are some things I would like to see them specifically look for, I'd like to be part of a...
Committee?
Committee or something to suggest some of those things at the appropriate time.
I would say that if there are, if there are anything, if there's anything that you all are aware of, or are, is the community is aware of any issues, that if they can let us know that, I mean...
The royal us?
And all that, and we have these conversations with IBTS, that will just be something that they know is an issue community-wise. And again, these things come down to what the community wants to set as its standard, right? So we need to hear from the community, and you all are obviously members of the community as far as issues that you see, your problems, your challenges that you see, so that we can appropriately address them with those problems.
And speaking of that, taking that one step farther, will they make suggestions to us on how to better be specific in our core codes and ordinances to have a more likelihood of having the outcome that we're wanting be reflected in our ordinances by our requirements? Because I don't know that we have, do we have a pool of water, swimming pool, pond, reservoir, or other receptacles, I would assume, that are neglected and causing some type of problem? But do we have that in our, anything?
Usually in the nuisance code.
In our nuisance code, there's...
It's in there, but that's often where you'll find it.
That's one thing that gets back to our revision of our codes. And I think that as we work through this process, we will come back and reevaluate and say, we don't have this here, this is common, or we're finding this to be an issue. We would bring that back to the city council and say, this is something that we're finding...
Ten of these, or, yeah.
Please, just as a change to our ordinance. Typically, the specific example that you, that you gave of things like cesspools like that. Again, nuisance ordinance should cover that. But again, that's, those are things through the process that we'll look back and say, okay, how can we tweak this moving into next year? How can we change our ordinance to be better utilized for this process next year?
Very good.
It's a cost evaluation.
Great, yes, please.
Do they have this relationship with other municipalities?
Thank you. Other questions, concerns, comments?
Mr. Reeves?
Yep.
So in 2019, they're going to review every property of the city, correct?
That is the intent. That is, the only caveat to that would just simply be if it becomes a lot...
On risk.
That would obviously delay that. Just again, manpower, but the intent is to try to work board by board. So we would go in, one ward, they would review everything, we would go through what the issues that they found, figure out a course of action. And then once that's done, move on to the next one, next one, the next one. So that's sort of the systematic approach, is to just address it file board. So again, those are things that I think from a council standpoint, that if you're familiar with any issues within your respective board, to let us know that going into this, so that again, we make those notes as they are going through that area.
Who else? Seeing none, vote please.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Kids?
Yes.
Curly?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good, on to number four, smoke-free housing policy addendum.
Good evening, Carrie Frederickson, PHA. Mine should be hopefully fairly easy.
Uh-oh.
It has just come to my attention that the legal jumbo-jumbo, I guess that you could call it, in the original smoke-free policy has raised some questions and arguments that can be misconstrued. So in the memo and attachments, I have suggested just a cleaner, more precise wording. It should be noted, there's no change to the actual policy or the requirements of the residents. The wording that is suggested, like I said, is just a cleaner version of what was already there. And the second suggestion for changing the, just one word, from intended to acquired, because residents are not leaving intended as required, so. And that was the whole intent of the policy, was that the residents of the areas are required, and that they have to be in those. So I would be happy to answer any questions.
Very good, thank you. Anything else from the citizens? Seeing none, that's a good question, but we'll do it in discussion, so I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the clarification revision, smoke-free housing policy addendum.
Second.
Moved in seconded, questions, concerns, comments, and we'll start down here this time.
Is there a provision for e-cigarettes or vapor?
There is not at this time, like currently allows them. So we just kind of went along with HUD's guidelines for the policy. Obviously, should they ever come out and change that, then we would make an amendment at that time. Those currently make my life somewhat easier, because people have resorted to those and stopped actually smoking cigarettes in their apartment, so one battle at a time.
Now, has the policy been accepted overall?
It has gone surprisingly well. We're in year three already, believe it or not, but they, like, I stuck in there tonight, and there were people outside smoking, which makes you feel good, because you feel like a lot of times they're only out there when I'm there, you know, and then you just imagine they all just sit inside smoking when I'm not there. But there are actually quite a few of them outside even when I make surprise visits, so it's going pretty good.
Number five doesn't have anything after it.
Did that even cut off?
No, there's just nothing after number five, and I was confused a little bit.
On which section?
Smoke-free complex, following smoke-free complex, number four, and before landlord to promote no smoking policy, number six. I'm looking at that, and I just want to...
Oh, I think she's looking at the draft.
Yes.
Which got cleaned up later on.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
With the actual addendum itself.
Yeah, there's a draft with everything marked out, and then there's a clean revision of what would actually be...
That wasn't listed, yeah, okay.
That threw me off when I first saw that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Shannon?
Nothing?
That's why I voted.
Nothing else? Vote, please.
Curly?
Yes.
Kids? Yes.
In a Red Bull?
Stevens?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Congratulations, and I think, yes.
You introduced yourself with a new name.
Was it Frederickson?
Frederickson?
I lived last summer.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, that's exciting.
Your memo still says Newton though, I think Mark pointed that out.
Does it? Yeah. Don't tell my husband.
Makes it all void. On to item number five, CES Waterline Projects Change Order number one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Matt Bees, Deputy Director of Public Works. I'm surprised you actually...
Continue directly, so. What is this thing with change orders? Am I missing something?
Today's change order for the CES Waterline Project consists two work change directive items. The first one was to replace a piece of failed storm pipe that was right along the side of where the water line was going. The contractor, at the time when he was going through there, gave us a quote basically to replace the piece of pipe. And we had to go ahead and do that, and it was, it was there approximately 1950. The second item is to relocate a fire hydrant. This one actually was installed per plan in the location where it was supposed to go. Actually, it was slightly off of that, because the contractor and the inspector realized it was more or less in the driveway. They slid it a little further, then after our review of it later on, we said, hey, it'd actually be better if it got over, you know, or so. Didn't have to worry about anyone hitting it. Contractor had already backfilled it and moved on down the street, so he had, this is his time to come back, dig it back up, add a piece of pipe to extend it out a little further. Both these change orders come to $3,750, so we're happy to answer your questions.
Thank you. Anything else to add? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a, what do I, make?
Motion.
Oh, yeah, I was reading the wrong thing. I make a motion to approve change order number one, CES Waterline Project.
Second. Moved in seconded, questions, concerns...
No!
I don't have any others more.
But it just says change order number one, and this is change order number two.
There are two parts of this first change order.
Oh, okay, so both of them are under change order number one, sorry, numbers.
That's okay.
Both of these had to go through the cumbersome purchase order request process that we talked about earlier?
Well, change orders, uh, they have their own company.
All other system.
I can issue work change directives to the contractor to have him do certain things, but I can't actually change the contract. That's why we've amassed a certain number of them, so instead of me coming to you every time I have $1,800, I group them together into work change directive.
Makes sense, okay.
Change order.
Nothing. In a bigger picture, how close are we to completion on project?
They are on the last block, the last piece of Cornell right now. They've started in spring, they've made it down to Murphy, now they're between Murphy and Morris, thank you, with the water line. They've still got to come back in, do the sidewalk, Cornell and Shindley. Putting in tiny meters and stuff, we started to do the upgrade to the meters, but we almost got most of the water made itself in, which is pretty big.
So we're looking at expectation, probably what, mid-summer or later?
Five to 10 years, yeah. And then, the sidewalk ramps, are there new style of sidewalk ramps? Don't they, they look wider, or where the sidewalks go to the street?
Two foot by four foot truncated dome dome.
Oh, sorry, I must have been wrong. I didn't realize they were truncated, I apologize. Any other questions, concerns, comments?
I was just going to mention a thank you for whoever chose this, and for you guys doing the work, because I have noticed that, like, probably seven, eight houses within this, I'll call it a district that we've done, have either flipped or increased in value at least 100%. There was one house sold for 80, sold for 80 to a flipper recently, sold for 270, so, I mean, you guys are making a massive impact in Ward One.
I was just confirming, at some point, we need to rejoin the streets on the areas, for the street program.
Yeah, I was just saying, gotten the calls on that part, I just told them...
It's gonna happen, it just takes time.
We're getting there, we're doing, your water's better.
Anything else? Seeing nothing else, vote please.
Stevens?
Yes.
Burley?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Kidd?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good, on to item number six, 2019 mowing contract award.
Again, Matt Bees, Deputy Director of Public Works. This is the annual mowing, this is, we've done this now. The little bit of this year was lawn force, we did check their references, they have experience doing another cemeteries, which was stuff, and we were at last year, and we've got pretty good references and responses back from them on those, so. This is basically to do 20 sites in the city, 26 of them are done, or 20, hang on, 39 weeks, 26 of those weeks it's, everything gets mowed, 13 of those weeks, several of them early or not mowed. We have some that are bi-weekly.
Right.
Awesome, yeah.
Two, three, two weeks. Then in the past, up to two years.
We're all very good.
It's contagious down there.
Yeah, sorry, it's, we started.
Very good, questions, I'm sorry, anything else to add? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Ward makes a motion to approve lawn force that's a successful vendor to provide mowing services in 2019.
Ooh, second.
Moved and seconded, questions, concerns, comments, and we'll start down here. Nope.
Sir?
No. No. Very good, vote please.
Kidd?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Mackey? Yes.
Thompson? Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Burley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good, on to number seven, Challenger International Soccer Camp.
Ben Hess, Bonner Springs Parks and Recreation Coordinator, thank you for listening to me speak tonight. We're currently wanting to offer a soccer camp this summer in conjunction with Challenger Soccer. A little bit about Challenger Soccer, Challenger Sports, coach and staff, has spent more than 25 years developing players, coaches, and soccer club systems throughout the USA, Canada, the UK, and Brazil. That knowledge and experience is now available to all coaches, administrators, parents, and players through Challenger Soccer camps and clinics. Part of the benefit of this camp is professional coaching. All campers will also receive a free soccer ball, camp t-shirts, a coaching app, and the ability to upload videos to the website where they can get professional teaching and coaching. Hoping this is enough information for you to approve a partnership with us in Challenger moving forward.
Very good. Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to enter into a contract with Challenger International to offer two one-week soccer camps.
Second. Very good. Very good, moved and seconded, questions, concerns, comments, we'll start down here. Sir?
Thanks for looking into this and doing the work, mate.
You bet.
That's right, great opportunity.
Did we come to them, or did they come to us?
I came to them, I've worked with them in the past.
Okay.
So we're trying to boost the soccer program, and that's just one of the ways.
Awesome. What's the max enrollment capacity for these programs?
Well, it kind of goes on field size, so for every, what is it, 12 to 15 campers, you have to have a coach. Certain sized fields, kind of up to 30 campers, so we have a pretty big field, so we can probably host anywhere between 60 or 70 campers if we wanted. And there's two camps, the little types for three to five-year-olds, and the three-hour camp for six to 15-year-olds, so.
That could potentially bring in...
We'd take a lot, yeah.
Five to $700 toward, to the parks.
Yeah, we get $10 for every registration, so it's not, I would say it's not so much for us designed to make a whole lot of money off of more than is just to kind of provide the opportunity and try to keep them around and stuff like that.
Doesn't cost us anything, which is nice.
Yeah, all we have to do is provide the space, a tent, and some water.
Cool.
And it's super good, so that would be my job. But, yeah, we do make, we do make a little bit off of it, which is, you know, always a nice concession, but for the most part, it's just good service.
Use our space.
Thanks, Ben.
Is there a minimum number that have to sign up before they'll?
I'll need to speak with them. I guess I would have to try to see what they feel as what it's going to cost them to have, because the guys that teach the camp come from overseas and house with...
Wow.
We can provide a host family if we'd like, but since Challenger headquarters are in Kansas City, they, the administrators house them on their own. I'm not sure on a minimum, off the check with Mike, he's actually in the UK right now, teaching camps and clinics over there, so when he gets back in the next seven days, we can kind of, kind of dive into this a little more once approval.
I'd just hate to see it sign, you know, six, seven, eight kids up, and they then cancel on them because it wasn't enough, and that's what...
Yeah, I don't, I think they could, they could four or five, you know, just, you know, then maybe just send one person out, you know? But, from my experience, these camps do really well, the Challenger camps, they're kind of world-known, so, yeah.
Yeah, where else is Challenger having the camps at this summer?
Uh, oh.
Locally, locally.
Oh, locally? You can go to a map on their website, and I think I looked a couple weeks ago, and there was maybe six spots throughout the entire metro.
So we could, usually at Challenger camps, they'll have kids from metro-wide there, or at least from our two-county areas, so...
Yeah, we stand a pretty good chance to maybe kind of use it as a recruiting tool.
And that's what some of the competitive soccer teams have done traditionally, is have these high-level camps to help draw in.
Absolutely. We've done stuff, partnered with MLB Youth Organization for Pitch Hit and Run, and we were one of the only four camps in the area, and people came up to our parks and actually chose to visit the parks and join our programs, just because of spending time out there, so...
Cool.
Yeah, we have North Parks, improving, so it'd be nice to get some, some action out there, so, yeah.
Very good.
Should be good, good, and we'll see.
Very good. No other questions, concerns, comments, vote please.
Burley?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Kidd?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. And on to item number eight, K-9 and Me parking lot change order number one.
Thank you. The council approved a off-street parking, that's a super park, dog park, K-9 and Me, aptly named. When that was actually put together, if you've been by there, you'll notice the area has been dug, and the good find was that the ground was not compacting, we did have a similar type of issue when we installed a trail around this area a few years ago. So this change order includes the addition of about two to three inches of plain base rock to stabilize that subgrade, also adds about 18 days of construction, and an additional cost of $5,000, so we are looking for approval of change order number one.
Very good, thank you. Any additional? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve change order number one for the K-9 and Me parking lot project.
Second. Moved and seconded, questions, concerns, comments, start down here, sir.
18 days, do they have to excavate additional, is that why it's added additional time?
Compaction.
Will the pups still be able to use the area while this is being done?
Absolutely, yeah, this is just...
Because I know it's very important to some people in the area.
...the west side, so that the, still have full use of the actual K-9 area.
Okay.
Nothing. Nothing, all the way down. Seeing nothing, vote please.
Reeves?
Yes.
Burley?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Kidd?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. They should probably refrain from using the place where the bulldozer is digging right then, but...
Oh, okay, no bull.
Yeah, no bull. Nope. On to item number 10, I'm sorry, nine, Lions Park Ball Field renovation acceptance.
This project was approved by council in September last year, had a total cost of about $31,000. The project was delayed a little bit to allow for, I think, an installation of sod in the outfield, which was completed on March 27th. This year, the irrigation lines were checked as well, just to make sure that those are functioning, therefore the project is now complete. We're recommending approval, final payment of $2,500 to Game Time Athletics for the ball field renovation project.
Very good, seeing nothing else, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve final payment of $8,500 to Game Time Athletics for the ball field renovation project.
Second. Moved and seconded, we'll start down here this time. Nothing.
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 Very good, vote please.
Mackey?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Kidd?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Burley?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Good, on to item number 10, personnel policy update.
The Personnel Policies and Procedures Handbook is reviewed on an annual basis as opportunities to ensure appropriate revisions are in place to continue to allow for the efficient and effective employee administration. This is reviewed against the League of Kansas Municipalities Personnel Policy Handbook. And again, there are two documents included, one shows a clean version of what's being recommended compared to where you see changes that, major changes that have occurred with this revision, so we're looking for approval of the personnel policy.
Very good, nothing to add, seeing no other comments, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the personnel policy as presented.
Second. Moved and seconded, questions, concerns, comments?
Nothing.
No.
Very good, thank you for the wonderful workshop presentation, vote please.
Kidd?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Burley?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good, on to item number 11, the Board of Zoning, BSZ-142 rezoning request for Bonner Crossing.
Sorry, my finger was in your...
Oh, man, we're on a roll tonight.
Shot across the bow.
Boom. Whoa. I thought I would enlighten you before I started. This comes before you as a rezoning request that is not fully a request for approval or denial. Due to improper notice, the city council has, does not have the authority to decide on this issue, and staff is recommending returning the item to the planning commission with the instruction to renotice the application for a future planning commission meeting.
Action, very good. Anything else? Seeing none, no other comments? I...
Do we need to return each of these items individually? Thank you.
I would entertain a motion concerning item 11.
Can it be a motion? Yeah, we don't make one, do we? I know it's a motion on that, that's why I'm curious.
There's a recommendation.
We'll make a motion to make a recommendation. I don't know another way to make, make it and have it be official, so...
That's why I'm not sure either. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to recommend item to the planning commission with instructions to renotice the application for future planning commission for BSZ-142 rezoning request for Bonner Crossing.
Second. Moved and seconded, questions, concerns, comments? Sir?
None yet, I'll wait till it comes back.
There you go.
Okay.
Vote please, oh, I'm sorry, did you have something? Nope, okay, vote please.
Shannon?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Burley?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Reeves? Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
On to item number 12, very similar, which is a SUP-143 Special Use Permit for Concert Pavilion at State Avenue and Speedway Boulevard. Staff.
Again, due to improper notice, staff is asking council to recommend the planning commission to renotice the application and have a future planning commission meeting.
Very good. Seeing nothing else, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to recommend returning SUP-143 Special Use Permit for Concert Pavilion at State Avenue and Speedway Boulevard to the planning commission with instructions to renotice the application for future planning commission action.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions, concerns, comments?
None yet.
Seeing none, vote please.
Thompson?
Yes.
Early?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I know, I'm, I'm getting hoarse. An additional paperwork that we need to do on item number 13, SUP-144 Special Use Permit to Allow Event Center at 611 West Second Street, staff.
Due to improper notice, council lets authority decide the issue. Staff recommends returning the item to the planning commission with the instruction to renotice the application for a future planning commission meeting.
Very good. Seeing no other questions, concerns, comments, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion recommending returning the item, SUP-144, to the planning commission with instructions to renotice the applicant by application for future planning commission action.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions, concerns, comments? We'll start down here. Nope. Vote please.
Stevens?
Yes.
Early?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Thank you very much. On to our reports this evening, the first being the city manager's report.
Just want to let everybody know that the Cedar Ridge Disc Golf Course, as it will be called, will be celebrating its grand opening celebration on May 18th. For those not familiar, park staff has been diligently working along with folks from Dynamic Disc who actually worked there to design this course that's located in North Park. City staff went through and actually cleared a lot of trees and made one heck of a course to the extent that it's actually being utilized while still under construction. And there's a cool app, too, that you can actually go and find all the different holes there, too, some of the showing, too. Anyway, again, that celebration will be on September 18th from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Please come out. There's also going to be a commemorative disc, that will be.
What was the date?
What was the date?
May 18th.
Thank you. You said September.
That's what I thought. Wow.
I got September.
I thought, man, that came out in the future.
Finger in your ear.
So that's enough on that one. Oh, the request has also come in, too, that if, as you said, the planning commission, it's been a long night, governing body would like to attend that meeting and actually throw it to the first disc. So if you could, if you're interested in attending or available to attend that day, please let Chris know so that we can get everything taken care of on that front. A KNA, a new SD that has solicited a lot of public positive.
Yeah, I've got a group from South Overland Park coming out to play, I'm excited.
It's definitely a tourist draw as well as a great event.
It's a wild part, too.
Draw, the police department had a wonderful 420 enforcement over the weekend, just really quickly, on those stats, there were 64 stops over that course of time, and there were actually 10 arrests during that time as well, so, could go see the police department for enforcing the laws of the state of Kansas. And then also, just want to give kudos to Betsy Smith, she, if anybody was able to, Mr. Mackey was there on Saturday with the Easter egg hunt, again, continues to be a great draw. I think we're the only Easter egg hunt in Wyandotte County, which certainly has an amazing draw to have people come in and take part in that as well as just getting to know our community and the attractions that we have here, so, want to thank her as well as all the park staff that put time into that. I know, I think Ben even stuffed a few eggs, a little candy.
Yeah, he sure did.
And then lastly, just wanted to bring, I guess I have two more things. Again, with Ben being here, we are working on trying to solidify our relationship, just with the general tenor going on with Sporting Kansas City. Sporting Kansas City actually does have sort of a youth club type of affiliate. They do have other government parks and rec departments as part of that, so again, that's just an opportunity to showcase a great thing nearby here with Sporting Kansas City. One of the things that, some of the things that come with that is that kids that are enrolled in our program would actually get to go to the stadium and kind of get some first, so, get to be involved more than just the average folks. Again, so we're working on that, and hopefully we'll be able to solidify that relationship with them. And then lastly, Arbor Day celebration is going on, so Bonner Beautiful has been hard at work putting together a great program once again, so that'll be April 26th at 2:00 PM at BSE, where it'll be a program, Drum Safari, and then also, they coordinated with parks to actually plant a tree at South Park as part of that remembrance of 2019 Arbor Day, so, again, another great event going on. Our city manager report included several events going on, so, lots of great things going on. That concludes my report.
Great. Thank you so very much. Appreciate it. Moving on to council report items, and we'll, I lost track. We'll start down here.
Happy to be here.
You're good.
I'm good.
Thanks to the road crews for putting in the time on 138th Street with the corrugated pipe and trying to effect some temporary change on it.
Carson made it sound like Big Brother is watching you and there's people coming in, but I think we really need to pay attention to this. You know, it worried me very much, so, let us stay vigilant.
I'd like to mention Bonner Springs made the Kansas City Business Journal. They said that we were supposed to be having a big meeting tonight, which didn't happen. We pushed it along, thanks to research, Rachel. Along with that, what was it, I think, three, four pages after they mentioned a boner, there was about a five-page article about this weekend, because it was 420, the marijuana holiday, and my birthday. I was curious as to looking into an ordinance to changing our stance on that in the way of making it, not decriminalizing it, but lowering the fine to where it's not a misdemeanor, to where we're not screwing people whenever we have concerts and things like that. We invite Snoop Dogg here to Bonner Springs, Kansas, but we arrest people for what Snoop Dogg is known for, marijuana. And I've been curious if we could look into, if we could make it a fine for it, say like $42 or even 50 bucks, because all we're doing, what brought my attention to it is, I made my neighbor mad and got in court, and I'd say probably 10, 15 people, almost all the people that had problems with it or were being prosecuted for it, they don't have any money, and we're just screwing them. They're local citizens. I know, because I've had tenants that have had problems with it, and whenever you go through the system for it, they give them an AA card, an attorney card for attorneys in Wyandotte County, and it's just a tax. It's basically a tax on minorities and poor people. Lawrence, Wichita, and several other communities have already changed it, have either entirely decriminalized it, or, as I've mentioned, made something to the amount of changing it to where it's a fine, like a parking ticket or speeding ticket, than screwing people who don't have money and giving them a misdemeanor, and then it's a continual cycle of, they don't have a job, or they might have a job but they lose it because of their P tests that they have to take, that it costs thousands, sometimes five, 10,000 bucks to be able to do it, and they can't get jobs because of the misdemeanors. So I don't know how we would go about doing that, or even if people would have interest, but I've been asked a lot, because I know I have, somebody in my ward actually got their house searched because one of their neighbors were pissed at them, and they said that they were smoking weed, so they got their whole house searched, and we had two officers that sat outside their house for, I think, four to six hours, just to search somebody for weed, which in 26 states is legal, and actually in Missouri here in July 1st of this year will be basically legal and entirely decriminalized, so 30 minutes away. We basically ruined this kid's life. I mean, he lost his job and everything, because now he's got to go to court, and I thought it was, I mean, I fully respect our officers, I've already talked to chief about it and everything, and if we made something like an ordinance to this fact, the recommendation that I've had is if we could at least make it so that it's not, we're not decriminalizing the search and seizure aspect of it, because we do have a drug dog. I'm not looking to take that away, because it's been really good on the methamphetamine bus, heroin, fentanyl, and those types of things, but just so that we're not screwing people that are already in our community, and we're not being hypocritical with it. I'll hop off my soapbox, but just looking into an ordinance so we can do that. That's mine.
Thank you. Anything else, sir? I'm not going to say anything right now. Okay. All right. Thank you. As the mayor's report, I do have several things I'd like to bring up. The city of Prairie Village has a letter that they provided to the Council on Mayors, which was the leadership group of mayors from Wyandotte and Johnson County, that is in support of House Bill Number 2345, and that group will probably be looking to support that. It increases the flexibility with the property tax lid for communities, and I just thought I'd pass that along. If you need more information, please contact me sometime. Also, I've been notified this afternoon by a concerned citizen that the Leavenworth County Planning Commission will hold a public hearing regarding an application for a special use permit for extraction of raw material, sand, near Lynnape, they're calling it the Lynnape Sand Quarry, and it was that individual's understanding that those trucks would be hauling sand through Bonner Springs primarily. We have regulations in place concerning truck traffic in Bonner Springs, of course, and they can certainly accommodate that. However, if any of your constituents would like to be heard, it is open to the public for anyone concerned about this issue on Wednesday, May 8th, at 6:00 PM in the meeting room located on the second floor of the Leavenworth County Courthouse at 300 Walnut Street in Leavenworth, Kansas, for those of you who might like to comment on this special use permit. And I have that information for anyone who would like it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Point of information on this, didn't we quite a few years ago go through this same thing about they were going to be hauling sand through Front Street?
And there was concern with the road and the impact to the road, and so we do have made, in the past, taken an opportunity to have the resources available to the police department to be able to evaluate those trucks, and I would imagine that the speed and the weight of those trucks would be closely monitored by our police department.
Would they be coming out of the quarries?
They would actually be coming either, from what I understand, and I don't, this is not anything but third-hand knowledge, they said that it would, the traffic would probably come down Leavenworth County Road 32 to Loring Road and through Bonner Springs, or up Leavenworth County Road 2 to K-32 and through Bonner Springs. So that's the only information I have. I don't know anything. Yes, there, several years ago, there was another proposed, and the concerns with that were some of the ridges or culverts over some of the areas that they would have to be traveling, which will be similar to this, so that may have an impact on the.
Very similar, because that would be truck traffic, correct me if I'm wrong, but that would be shidley, or shite, I'm sorry.
Shite, rains for a portion of Bonner.
And what impact would that have on our roads and everything else, and how long do they project this to go on? What would be the amount of truck traffic?
They're going to tear up shite to do the water line replacement.
Yeah, I don't have any information on any of those specifics, so if you have questions, concerns, comments, I would refer you to that planning and zoning meeting for Leavenworth County on May 8th at 6:00 PM at the Leavenworth County Courthouse, 300 Walnut Street, on the second floor in the meeting room. Do you have other information? You don't have any information concerning that for planning and zoning?
No, that's the first I've heard.
Very good. Thank you. I'll pass this along to you. Other information, I was happy to make it up to the Bonner Springs High School Technical Building opening this evening. The facility is second to none. If you haven't had an opportunity, please reach out to the high school, they're very proud of it and should be. This is, it has, just blows your mind. The state of the technical education in Bonner Springs, not only technical, but is very well supported, so I applaud the school district and how well they've done on that facility. Also, the mayor's youth council this last week, I'd like to give out my compliments to the police department. The mayor's youth council toured the police department and was able to see the simulator in action, and in the beginning, what we kind of, we told the students from the high school that we were going to tour the simulator, or the police department and the simulator, and everybody's first idea is that's a computer game of some type. This is as far different from a computer game as you can imagine. It is a state-of-the-art, again, educational interface for officers to be able to refine their professional skills in dealing with situations that come up in less than a split second. So it can be controlled by the computer operator on to the events and how they're played out. If you haven't observed that, I would highly recommend that you take that opportunity. It is a training device that is not, many departments can only dream to have one, and it's just a small amount of the support that the council has had for the police department in the past, and we are very proud of. Also, they got to show us our air support drone, the police department's air unit.
Air wing.
I have suggestions, I'd love to have a helicopter here in Bonner Springs, but so far that's been vetoed, but. Also, the new police cars and as well as the new utility, UTV. So it's a side-by-side that will be sore, it is sorely needed for all the event issues that we have at events, the RIM Fest, Providence Medical Center, Amphitheater, the Tiblo Days, Marvel Days, the, all the community events that we have, if necessary, at any of our parks, as well as any future areas. So it looks like it's a welcome addition. It's not, like they said, it's not going to chase down people, but it will be able to provide the support that our officers need in those situations. Committee assignments, I'm looking at, thank you for those of you that have asked, I'm going to be looking at the different committee assignments for the council, and we'll be reviewing those, so if you have any information or concerns about that, please reach out, and we'll be doing that over the next several weeks. Other than that, I don't have anything additional unless someone has questions for me. We're adjourned.
I did hear that Wyandotte County Lake got half a million dollars allocated to their playground from KCK.
That's nice.
They chose that over Wyco Lake and that, so it's going to be.
Wyandotte County?
Yeah.
Park got that?
Yeah.
Half a million?
All-inclusive play area, kind of something. They were looking at three parks, but they chose that one.
Wow, that's great.
A little bonus.
Yeah. Seeing nothing else, we're adjourned.